Good morning. Want to welcome everybody to the Harton County Commissioners Court. Today is Tuesday, December tenth, two thousand twenty-four. It is ten a.m. and all members of the court are present, therefore this meeting is called to order. Everyone will please rise to the invitation delivered today by Commissioner Kirkendall, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner?
Father, we come before you today, and Lord, we're thankful and grateful, Lord, for life, Lord, for the gifts and talents that you've given us. Oh, we thank you for Shirley today, Lord, as we celebrate her, Lord, we celebrate her many years of county service and her service as tax assessor collector. Lord, and Father, we pray that you bless her in her retirement. Lord, today we especially think about Christ, Lord, and as we celebrate his birth during this season, Lord, that, Lord, our hearts will turn toward heaven. And Father, we will seek those things which are eternal. Lord, we look up our first responders, God, and we ask you to protect those who protect us. We ask these things in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Our allegiance is through the flag of the United States of America and a sovereign republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if the court is okay, let's skip down to Adam number six. Number six is Consider Adoption of Resolution Thirty-three dash twenty-four, recognizing Ms. Shirley Cook for twenty years of dedicated service to the citizens of Harton County, and wishing her well in her retirement as tax assessor collector for Harton County. Ms. Cook, what a great crowd we have here today. You've done a fantastic job, and it's my honor to read this resolution today, thirty-three dash twenty-four. Honoring the career of committed and dedicated service and retirement of Harton County Tax Assessor, Ms. Shirley McIntyre Cook. Whereas Harton County Commissioners Court is proud to honor the service of Ms. Shirley McIntyre Cook, Harton County Tax Assessor Collector, for her sacrifice of hard work, faithful care, and dedicated service to the residents and taxpayers of Harton County, Texas. And whereas Ms. Cook is a native of Harton County, Texas, and whereas Ms. Cook is a lifelong member of First Pentecostal Church of Silsby, where she taught Sunday School for forty years. And whereas Ms. Cook is a nineteen seventy-six, Spirit of Seventy-six graduate of Silsby High School. And whereas Ms. Cook worked as a professional florist for twenty-five years. And whereas Ms. Cook was a state-certified elementary paraprofessional. And whereas Ms. Cook began her career in the Harton County Tax Office on January twelfth, two thousand four, when she was just a baby, I'm sorry. She was hired by former Harton County Tax Assessor Collector, Ms. Shirley Stevens. And whereas Ms. Cook became a state-certified tax assessor collector in two thousand ten, a professional county collector in two thousand fifteen, and county tax office professional in two thousand sixteen. And whereas Ms. Cook was elected by the people of Harton County as tax assessor collector November eighth, two thousand sixteen, and sworn into office January first, two thousand seventeen by Justice of the Peace Charles Brewer. And whereas Ms. Cook served as Harton County Voter Register from January first, twenty seventeen, to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. And whereas Ms. Cook served in the Harton County Salary Committee, Harton County Policy Committee, and Harton County Healthy County Committee as the Chair, and the Harton County Appraisal Board of Directors. And whereas Ms. Cook served as volunteer ambassador for Harton County Strong during Tropical Storm Harvey disaster recovery efforts, providing resources and raising funding for Harton County households impacted by disaster, and volunteer team serving Harton County. And whereas Ms. Cook served as volunteer ambassador for Harton County Toys for Tots, and still does today, she'll plug them here in just a minute, I bet. Whereas Ms. Cook acknowledges her greatest accomplishment as raising a wonderful and honorable son, who has blessed her with a loving daughter-in-law, and two remarkable grandchildren. And whereas Ms. Cook has faithfully served the residents and taxpayers of Harton County, Texas for over twenty years. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Commissioners Court of Harton County, Texas, does hereby honor and give highest recognition to Harton County Tax Assessor Collector, Ms. Shirley McIntyre Cook, committing her commitment and tireless effort to conduct tax office and county business with strong integrity and the highest ethical standard, providing great care and compassion to Harton County, its residents, and its taxpayers, therefore leaving it stronger for future generations, and conducting herself both personally and professionally in a manner that is above reproach. Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall to approve Resolution Thirty-three dash twenty-four, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Adoption of Resolution Thirty-three dash twenty-four is hereby accomplished by the Commissioners Court, and we will get that original to you here in just a few minutes. Ms. Cook, you may come on up. Give me just a minute, I'm having a technical difficulty, give me just one second. I think there's some people in another room of the courthouse that want to watch this. In just a minute. Sorry about this. There we go. All right, this is Ms. Shirley McIntyre Cook. And go ahead. Anybody that you want to bring up here, please bring them up. The floor is yours.
Um, my family.
That's me.
Yes. Um, I would want to thank you so much, and those words written by my beautiful sister, Mom Michelle. Nobody has words like she does. Um, first of all, I have to thank God for giving me health and strength to start in the workforce fifty years ago. And then being blessed to, um, come to work for Ms. Shirley Stevens right at twenty-one years. I'm so thankful for my family. Sorry didn't want to miss, he had perfect attendance, he didn't want to miss school today. So I think his class made a field trip, and they're in the other room. His teacher's so considerate of that, and so he wouldn't get want that since today. Um, I am blessed with a wonderful family, and they've promised that they're going to take good care of me. I think they have my room reserved at the retirement home. Um, I have to say, um, Brother Looper and his beautiful wife, they're my pastors, and, um, he is a wonderful person, and, um, he is my spiritual guide. Um, Brother Duplessis is right there, and, um, he blames or credits me as being one of the reason that he doesn't have any hair. Because he did have to help raise me, so, thank you, Brother D. Um, Commissioners, Commissioner Cooper, thank you. Thank you for your friendship and for your dedication to Harton County. I appreciate you. Commissioner Kirkendall? Um, I have to be careful on that, my eyebrows are beautiful. Thank you so much for your dedication to the state of Texas and Harton County. Yep. Amanda, you came in with a whirlwind of hurricane and freezes, and you have stood so strong. And I want to know, I want you to know how much I appreciate you. You've done an amazing job. He calls himself the other Mr. Cook. I, I don't know what that means, but anyway. My friend, Ernie, he does not want me to say anything about this, but as a young green law enforcement officer, saved my life about thirty-something years ago. If you can, you can ask him about it, and he's going to say like he does about everything else, I don't remember. But, thank you, Ernie, you're my friend, and I appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
Judge, our first interaction as I took office was an argument over a calculator. But I want everyone to know that I won. Won that argument. But Judge, you were so gracious, and when I explained to you the situation of calculating tax rates, you quickly resented, related to me, and I was able to get that calculated. You are an amazing leader for Harton County. And, um, I've been in your office many times, crying. Um, we won't say what all about, but, uh, you have always been a gentleman to me. You have always been so gracious to me, and you are a wonderful, wonderful asset to this county, fiscally responsible, and I just want to say how much I appreciate you, Judge.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'll put you in charge in my next campaign.
Well, I might be. My friend over there, Ms. Debbie McWilliams, I have to say something. Um, and I don't want to take too much time, but this, I won't be here anymore. Debbie and I were classmates, and we had a math class our sophomore year where we were both bullied. And, um, in math class, and Debbie is the treasurer for Harton County, who counts all the money, and all the math, and all the formulas, and I'm the tax assessor collector. And I know our math teacher would shake his head and say, "That's not possible." But you know what, Debbie, we, we did it, didn't we? We did it. We survived that. It was traumatic, but we survived it. And both of us have that Mac in our name, and sometimes it comes in handy. To the sheriff that I failed to ask permission to even speak. Apology, Sheriff. Have to get permission. Um, he's my neighbor, and, um, he has been amazing to the tax office. I can't, uh, we're, they're right there anytime we need them, which is daily for other reasons. But they are there, a steady, a very steady group of people, and that's credited to the person that got the most popular votes in Harton County in the last election. And I must say, get your mother, who I knew, Miss Evelyn would be very proud of you. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
My, uh, brother, Judge Brewer, and his wife, Michelle, also, uh, my neighbors. Charles is my little brother. I don't know if y'all knew that or not, but he is my little brother, but I appreciate them very much. They are a great couple, and wonderful examples, and I love them dearly. My staff, I wouldn't be standing here if it wasn't for all of you. You are, you make me successful. You've made me, um, made me who I am. Been standing beside me for these past eight years, and we stood together the twelve before that, I guess. But thank you all so much. Um, Steve, you have a great crew to come in, and you're blessed to have them, and all their years of experience. I need to thank MVBA, because they, uh, Keith, they have provided a beautiful, um, luncheon or down in the other courtroom, and everybody needs to come down. Also, Line Barber Law Firm, um, Jane Guest has provided cakes and things. Uh, and Cat's Corner, who has done all of the setting up, and I haven't been down there, they wouldn't let me go. But anyway, it's, I'm sure it's beautiful. It's my grandson, my grandson Sawyer, my granddaughter Addison, who they say looks just like me. My son, Joseph, the light of my life, and my beautiful daughter-in-law, Haley. And they, they are going to take good care of me, and, um, I know I took a little extra time, but I had to. Say what's on my heart today, and I just can't say how much I thank God to Harton County for the opportunity. And because if not for this opportunity, I wouldn't be able to retire. And I thank you for everything that you do, the decisions that y'all make, that's in the best interest of the employees, as well as the citizens of Harton County. So, thank you, I'm, uh, thank you, thank you so much.
Wait, right there for just a minute. Does anybody else want to come up and say anything for Shirley, with Shirley, or about her? If so, please come on up and stand beside her, and if you want to say a few words, please go ahead.
I would like to say something. Ms. Sharon. Um, you know, when you are a leader, you're not a lord over anyone, you're actually a servant. And Ms. Cook was a servant unto us when I worked in the office. Whatever we needed, she helped us. If we were upset about something, she helped us. Even though sometimes we make butt heads with her decisions. We went ahead and we did what we were supposed to do. So Cookie, that's my nickname for her, because she's sweet. She's sweet, and I, I kind of have a pleasure to have worked with you and for you. Not only is a leader responsible for their crew, they're actually responsible to their crew. So Cookie did that for us. So I just want to say to you, congratulations. You're going to love retirement, because I'm loving it too.
Thank you, Sharon.
The, uh, V would like to get a picture, and I'd like to get Judge Brewer. And anybody else that would like to come up and stand on each side of Ms. Cook there, and if y'all will come in close here, uh, Mr. Aitken would like to come up and take a picture. And I just realized Danny Olivo is here. I didn't want to leave you out, but he took a picture as well, so thank you. All right, and as Ms. Cook, uh, stated, just before she stepped down, I've got one more thing to give to her, but there's a reception for her, a retirement party for her down in the county courtroom at the opposite end of the hallway here. So when y'all do leave here, please go down there, and I'm sure if anybody wants to say a few words there, that will be allowed as well. I've got a few things to give Ms. Cook real quick. At least I said we did this early to get rid of y'all, but that is not true, y'all. All right, first and foremost is our certificate of retirement to Shirley Cook for twenty years of loyal and dedicated services, service to Harton County, signed this tenth day of, of, uh, December, two thousand twenty-four, by the Commissioners Court and the County Clerk. So we'll get a picture with that. And then your jacket. Twenty years, real big. And a flag, and a flag too. How about this?
Oh.
Are you going to fly that?
No, I'm going to leave it in this frame.
Your jacket's twenty years of service.
Thank you so much.
One more. This is very nice.
I believe that, it was my office.
One night.
Brother Looper. Sister Looper. Brother Duplessis. Can you come up? You want to stand right here? Is this, is this where you want it? Usually there's a woman up here directing us.
Thank you so much for that. It was good, man.
Oh, thank you.
Thank y'all for letting us go through this for so long. I was her pastor for forty-two years. And she lost her mother. I tried to comfort her then. When she lost her dad, I became her surrogate father. And she's been a wonderful daughter and a wonderful child of God. And that's the highest honor that any person could ever receive, so we love you, Sharon.
All right, move back up, bottom number three. Consider and possibly approve the November twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four writ of meeting minutes as presented by the Honorable County Attorney, County Clerk. Posted by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number four, consider approval of request by the Honorable Deborah McWilliams County Treasurer to honor all registered claims, I'm sorry, cancel all registered claims from November twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, and approval of today's cash statement. Good morning, Ms. McWilliams.
Good morning. I'm asking the court to release me of the liability of one million, six hundred fifty-seven thousand, three hundred eighty-six dollars and sixty-two cents. On our cash report and general checking, we have six hundred seventeen thousand, seven hundred sixty-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents. And our First Financial Bank General Checking Special Money Market, fifteen million, nine hundred twenty-three thousand, five hundred sixty-two dollars and eighty cents. In tax pool general, we have three hundred fifty-three thousand, three hundred twelve dollars and sixty-nine cents for a total in cash fund of sixteen million, eight hundred ninety-four thousand, six hundred forty-three dollars and forty-seven cents.
Move to a prayer, Mr. President.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. McWilliams. Number five, authorization of payment bill as presented by Mrs. Candace McKinnney, Assistant County Auditor. Morning, Ms. McKinnney.
Good morning. Pre-approved expenditures for November twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four were nine hundred eighty thousand, eighty-five dollars and forty cents. Pre-approved expenditures for December the fourth through the fifth of twenty twenty-four were two hundred and four thousand, one hundred and four dollars and seventeen cents. Expenditures for today, Commissioners Court, December tenth, two thousand twenty-four are eighty-two thousand, eight hundred eighteen dollars and ninety cents. A couple of additional bills, uh, one, the insurance, three hundred seventy-eight thousand, two hundred ninety-nine dollars and six cents, and workers' comp insurance, twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred fifty-three dollars. Our total expenditures and transfers were one million, six hundred seventy-four thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars and fifty-three cents. Gross payroll for November twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four was six hundred fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred fifty-three dollars and eighty-nine cents. For a total transfer of the November twenty-seventh payroll was one million, one hundred twenty thousand, one hundred forty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Motion for further discussion. Second. Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Ms. McKinnney. Number seven is presentation of a draft version of the two thousand twenty-five Harton County address by Mr. Carl Marshall with Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission. Good morning, Mr. Marshall.
Good morning.
How are you doing?
The time of year in.
Yes, sir.
We have to make the annual book. Um, I just, you know, you got to look over it, make sure the corrections that you sent in made it. And, uh, y'all get back with me sometime, I guess this week, maybe early next week. And then we can get the final version ready for printing, and, uh, we'll have that ready for the first court date in, uh, January.
Yeah, good.
The, uh, I talked to you a couple of weeks ago, you know, about some that were missed. I guess it had them listed in the wrong precinct. I know, I don't know when these went to print, but have those changes been made in this topic?
Well, I looked at those few roads, and there were, um, I believe they were, they're supposed to be a precinct three.
Correct.
Yeah, they've been changed to precinct three.
Okay.
It should be in that new book, yeah, if you'll take a look and see. If not, we can just send an email and we'll get it corrected.
Right, okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item A, a discussion and possible action concerning reappointments or appointments of the Emergency Services Commissioners to all Harton County Emergency Services Districts and the Village Mills Emergency Services District Number Eight, to serve a two-year term effective January first, twenty twenty-five, to be served the thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Just to remind everyone, the reason that Village Mills E S D Number Eight is singled out is because they, uh, overlap Harton County and Tyler County. One of two E S Ds in the states that does that. The recommendations made, uh, by the Commissioners for appointments today are as follows. For E S D Number One, which serves the Coontz area, is Edward Bunstead and Carl Richardson. E S D Number Two, which serves the Lumberton area, is Tommy Evans, James Philp, and Harvey Zernial. E S D Number Three, which serves the Saratoga Community, is Gary Flowers and Christie Brown. E S D Number Four, which serves the Batson Community, is Jeremy Johnson, Freddie Hughes, and Charles, how do you say that name? Harbois? H A U B O I S. Uh, E S D Number Five, which serves the Sour Lake area, is John Carney, Betty Dillard, and Jim Mason. E S D Number Six, which serves the Silsby area, is Joe Clark and Joe A. Simpson. E S D Number Seven, serving the Votaw Thicket Community, is Danine Oswalt and Tommy Shelton. And E S D Number Eight, serving the Village Mills Community, is Mike Wiles. And, uh, again, since E S D Number Eight, uh, covers Harton and Tyler County, Harton County appoints three, and Tyler County appoints two of those E S D Commissioners. Motion for further discussion. And motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Judge, I'd like to say, uh, for the record, uh, unfortunately, the business of appointing E S D Commissioners has become very political, and it, it does not need to be that way. And it is not only any part, uh, become that way because of anything the Commissioners Court has done. It's because of perception out in, in the public on, uh, there being some type of, uh, criteria that one has to meet to be appointed to these boards. Uh, people in general, I mean, some might, but people in general don't have an understanding. Uh, just because somebody is a firefighter doesn't mean they qualify to be on the E S D board. This is more along the lines of, of, of managing budgets. Uh, the day-to-day operation of a fire department is left up to that fire chief and not the E S D board member. So I think it's important for, uh, people to understand what this is really about. And like I said in the beginning, it's unfortunate that it has become, uh, political.
I understand that we're not alone in that. I think that's kind of a problem that's becoming, uh, around the state, throughout the state. Um, so since you brought that up, I'll add a couple of things to that, and that is that, uh, it's been brought up to us, uh, to the Commissioners Court that maybe, uh, and the indication is we have the ability to do, to do this, and it's our decision to make E S D Commissioners elected by the people instead of appointed by the court. It is not our decision, and by law, we can't even do that if we wanted to. Even if the citizen has brought a petition to, to want to have the E S D Commissioners elected, the way the law is written now, according to, uh, the Administrator with Safe D, uh, we all know who Safe D is. By law, we could not do that right now. There's about three or four counties in the state that can, and I think two of them currently do. One of them is one of our neighbors, and it's Orange County. Uh, good for them, but, uh, for the time being, we have to appoint these Commissioners. The way the appointment process is done in the past, if somebody was getting off of one of the E S D boards, usually I would hear from, or Laura would actually hear from one of the E S D members, usually the president, but not always. And we, and they would say, "Hey, Joe's getting off the board, but we got, uh, Sam over here who wants to serve, and so if you'll accept his resignation and appoint him," and that's how we did it. And from what I understand, that's how it's done in most counties. It worked really good for a long time until it started not working so good, because we got accused of appointing good old boys, which, that's a term that can be taken here or there. But, uh, so we, we, we came up with an official process to take nominations from people. A person can nominate themselves, or someone else can nominate them to serve on the board. Uh, two members of the court review each of those nomination forms that we get, and they make this, uh, recommendation, just like y'all did here today with all of the, uh, names that I read off earlier. So I think we've taken strides to try to make it not political, but, uh, for some reason, it didn't. I think we're being accused of being political more now than we did before we started this process. So I'm not sure why that's happened, but I'm glad that you brought up what you did. And I think that we've done a, a very good job of, uh, sifting through the people that want to serve and appointing the best people for, for the job. So thank y'all for the work y'all have done to sift through those. I volunteered to, uh, help Amanda with any that she needed, because, uh, she has quite a few over in West Harton County, and, uh, she didn't ask me for help this time, so, uh, but I did review the nominations that you've submitted, and I think they're perfect. So thank y'all all for the work you're doing to make sure that we're appointing the best people for the job. And, uh, as to why it's become so political, I think there's, uh, reasons for that. Uh, I think people want it to be that way. They want to stir things up. But I think that we've done a better job of making it not political than it used to be. If anybody else has any discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Didn't mean to get long into the debate, but. Number nine.
Need to be said.
Number nine, consider approval of request by Mrs. Melinda Harrington, H R Director, to amend a job title in the Health Services Department from a meat, uh, epidemiology service, I'm sorry, epidemiology surveillance specialist M A to immunization slash Epi M A. And I'm told the reason for this is they have an open position over there, and, uh, they haven't received many applications based on the current job title, and that's the reason for the change. And motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number ten, consider approval of request to amend the fiscal year twenty-five budget for additional revenue received by R and B Two Department as follows. Increase revenue in line item zero one seven three seven two zero zero two in the amount of two thousand dollars. And increase expenditures in line item zero one seven six two two three three four by the same amount, two thousand dollars.
Similar.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. Just for public record, uh, this is, uh, money that comes in annually, uh, from a, uh, pipeline company to help, uh, refurbish material on the road. Uh, been receiving it since we've been, since I've been in office, and, uh, I believe the change to, uh, add it like this is coming because of our outside auditor.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number eleven, consider and possibly authorize the Honorable Shirley Cook, House and Saster Collector, to issue tax refunds as follows. The total amount is two thousand, one hundred fifteen dollars and sixty-three cents to two property owners for the reason of homestead, disabled veteran, and over sixty-five exemption.
Similar.
Second. And motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twelve, consider approval of request by Mrs. Missy Sims, purchasing agent, to authorize the county judge to execute standard form of agreement with construction managers of Southeast Texas LLC related to renovations of the Hardin County Jail and Hardin County Courthouse, approved by Commissioners Court on November twelfth.
Second.
And motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thirteen, consider approval of request by Mrs. Sims to authorize the county judge to execute amendment number two between Hardin County and the LaBeach Architectural Group Incorporated regarding architectural services under the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. Contract D R four three three two dash zero two three three Hurricane Safe Room. Again, this was approved in Commissioners Court on November fourth. Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Fourteen, consider approval of request by Mrs. Sims to authorize the county judge to sign standard form of agreement with N and T Construction Incorporated related to construction of Hardin County Hurricane Safe Room, approved by Commissioners Court on November twelfth.
Similar.
Motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. You're doing great. Fifteen, consider approval of request by Mrs. Sims to order the following equipment to be destroyed or otherwise disposed of as worthless after being unable to sell the equipment because no bids were made pursuant to section two sixty-three point one five two Local Government Code. A nineteen ninety-nine grade-off G three W D serial number ending in three three seven five, and a two thousand grade-off G three W D serial number ending in sixty-three eighty-four. I believe these are both yours, Commissioner Kirkendall, and I've tried to sell them and didn't get any bids.
Right. And, uh, just for the record, they're, they're really old and possible to get far, far, and they have major issues.
Similar.
Second. And motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Sixteen, consider approval of request by Mrs. Sims to authorize repairs to the Hardin County Jail, courthouse, and floodplain buildings as a result of damages received during the spring storms and floods in two thousand twenty-four. Event caused by large hail, damaging winds, and heavy rainfall. All repairs will be funded through insurance proceeds from a property damage, damage claim filed with Texas Association of Counties, less the county's out-of-pocket deductible in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. Mrs. Sims, you want to explain a little bit about this?
Sure. We received a check from TAC in October in the amount of eight hundred twenty-two thousand, two, two hundred twenty-seven dollars and twenty-seven cents. That total is the amount received for hail damages to the interior, exterior, and, um, any electrical or mechanical repairs less the depreciation of twenty-five thousand, uh, uh, less the depreciation and a twenty-five thousand dollar deductible. So seven hundred thousand, nine oh seven point eight two is what we received for, for the roofs. With the help of Mr. Franklin, he's with, um, four T Partnerships, TAC pays, he's a third-party consultant that TAC will pay for to help us make a recommendation to us about what kind of roof we need and help us get quotes. We have a quote from a cooperative purchasing vendor in the amount of six hundred ninety-two thousand, three hundred seventy-eight dollars and thirty-four cents. That includes the co-op fee, bonds, and upgrades to the roof. It's a thicker, better roof than what we have right now. So we came in under budget on the replacement roof.
But we do have some other repairs that they're working on getting a proposal to us for.
Correct.
From the interior because of damage to the walls and ceilings from the rain.
Possibly H P A C if there's any damage to those.
Yes, ma'am. Move to approve.
Second.
And motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Mrs. Sims is working on setting up a, uh, pre-construction meeting with, uh, the management firm that she just mentioned with Mr. Franklin and the, uh, contractor, and hopefully that'll be set up right after the first of the year. Uh, Sheriff, you'll be invited to attend. Bring anybody you'd like, and if anybody else wants to participate in that pre-construction meeting, just let us know. It's a pretty big project, and it's probably going to last about six weeks. Number seventeen, Mrs. Sims, purchasing agent, to present recommendation concerning proposals received for lease of county-owned property described as lots sixteen and seventeen. Block five, Diana D., I'm sorry, Diana Marie D. Shoak, Lumberton, Texas. If approved, consider authorizing the county judge to sign a lease agreement. To the Sam?
Proposals were opened on November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four at two P M. In the purchasing department, Pat Boyett and Stacy Eckert were present. We only received one proposal from Mr. Jerry Reed for two dollars a year. He's the one that's been leasing the property since the county got it. I spoke to Commissioner Cook. He's in his precinct, and our recommendation is to put him on lease again.
Mr. Cooper? Is that a motion?
Yes, that is a motion.
All right, and motion by Commissioner Cook. Seconded by Commissioner Young. For the, uh, public's knowledge, this is property that was purchased, uh, by the county through a, uh, buyout program through FEMA. Didn't cost the, uh, local taxpayers any money, and we leased it to an adjacent property, property owner, but we have to go through our bid process to do that. And, uh, so he keeps it maintained, but he's not allowed to build any permanent structures on that property. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. At all? Thank you. Number eighteen, consider discussing possibly approve the creation of an enterprise fund for the purpose of establishing an in-house courthouse cafe and authorize the county judge to order food, beverages, supplies, and equipment as necessary to operate the cafe and to employ part-time staff to prepare and serve food to the public and to Hardin County employees. If approved, consider approval of the enterprise fund budget that's been submitted, that's attached, and amend the general fund budget as follows. Transfer fifteen thousand dollars from the general fund contingency line item zero one zero four oh one eight hundred to a new line item zero one zero dash seven hundred dash zero eight zero, transfers to enterprise fund in the same amount, fifteen thousand. We talked about this, uh, a few weeks ago. Uh, y'all authorized me to put a, uh, plan together. I've worked closely with, uh, Regina Bolton and with, uh, Candace McKinney. Candace has, uh, done a lot of research on this and, and, uh, and, and, you know, stated to me that this enterprise fund needed to be created. And the amount that we came up with for the rest of this fiscal year, if the, uh, cafe is opened up late December, early November, would be ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and ten dollars. The reason for the fifteen thousand dollar transfer is to just get enough money started in that fund to start up with purchasing, uh, food, supplies, and any materials that we might need to get the cafe up and running. My, uh, recommendation to the court, if you accept this, is to, uh, try this for the rest of fiscal year twenty-five and see how it goes. I don't think that this is going to be a great ma- money-making, uh, and not trying to make a bunch of money, just trying to make sure that the employees and the citizens have that service. Uh, a few of them have asked, not, not a bunch of people have asked me, but I understand that, uh, chatter around the courthouse is that they wish the cafe was open. So if y'all, uh, authorize this, I think that the, uh, income from selling food and beverages should pay for the ninety-eight thousand dollars that I think it'll cost to run the cafe for the next nine months of the fiscal year.
So move.
And motion by Commissioner Cook, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Does anybody here want to say anything about that? Regina or?
Um, I would like to say I, I, I really think this is going to pay for itself. It needs, we figured out, you know, kind of what it would need to make to, uh, to sustain. And I don't see it really opening till a little later in January, just because of putting all the pieces together, making sure we have all the equipment, everything is where it needs to be because it has been sitting there for a while, and there's certain things that we're going to need to do what we're going to do. But, um, we're going to keep it simple. We're going to keep it, you know, uh, fast-paced so people can come in, get their stuff, and go. And, uh, I, I think it'll do well, so. But, uh, that's, I think, I think it'll pay for itself.
Are you going to be overseeing?
I'm going to be helping. He's overseeing. I'm, I'm, I'm second. I'm second chair.
But as I said earlier, it'll be open Monday through Thursday, uh, breakfast and lunch. And if we see a need to open it Friday, we'll evaluate that after, you know, sixty or ninety days or so and, and, uh, come back to the court and make any reports to the court. But, uh, anytime you have any questions, just let me know. If it doesn't work, we'll shut it down, and if it does, we'll keep it going. Uh, like Regina said, we're going to keep it simple. They'll, uh, cook breakfast. Most of lunch will be, uh, uh, prepackaged food that'll just be grab and go, but they will cook some lunch as well, make some, make the sandwiches or whatever.
There'll be one hot meal, and then everything else will be grab and go stuff, you know, salad sandwiches.
Got to keep it real simple so that we don't have a, uh, lot of expense.
We're going to change some things around. People can actually get a sandwich out there. So the microwave will be there, they can microwave their stuff, get it ready. Just keep it, you know, simple and so they can move, and, uh, we don't want to bog anybody down.
Can you, uh, look at maybe a salad or a salad?
We are going to send this out. We are going to have salads.
We're going to be, we're going to be salads will be, uh, in a box, but, uh.
We're definitely going to have salads already made up. Now, if you want a special salad, then you can order it. You can call in, maybe we'll have a call-in number or something. You can order that salad. They'll have it ready for you.
Okay. Sounds good, thank you.
Healthy options for healthy county. Yes, great. Well, thank y'all, and, uh, if anybody has any input on that, I'm always open to hearing that as well. Number nineteen, consider discussing possibly direct the county judge to negotiate with Perry Anderson Properties L T for the purchase of the current lease space located at four forty-five West Monroe Street where the AgriLife Extension Office, excuse me, is located and/or to explore the purchase of approximately twenty acres of vacant land currently listed for sale adjacent to the county-owned property at four forty West Monroe Street where the former Hardin County Hospital and Courthouse Annex is located.
Similar.
And motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Young. Uh, Sheriff had brought it up, uh, we had a couple of discussions with the appraisal district where they were looking for property. Uh, Sheriff had brought it up that he thought we should look at the property adjacent to the old hospital. And, uh, I received a call last week from, uh, one of the owners of that property. It's owned by three local, uh, sisters that inherited that property. Uh, and, and the statement was made that, uh, that's been for sale for a while. They've had a few offers that they did not accept. But if the county was interested, they'd like to sell it to the county. So, uh, now that I have, uh, I will have permission here in just a few minutes, I believe, to, uh, move forward with exploring that. My suggestion and discussion with her was that we might purchase about twenty acres. That's a forty-nine acre tract, and we don't need the entire acreage. But I think if, uh, the price is right and we buy that twenty acres, we already have three point three right there adjacent to it. That should be all the property that Hardin County government needs for at least, hopefully at least a hundred years, maybe longer. But, uh, you know, one of these days, there will need to be a new courthouse, hopefully not any time in the near future. I don't see that as a need in the near future, but it will be a need one of these days, and there's not any other property available here on the square to, to do something like that, so. We'll explore it. We'll see what the, uh, pricing is and come back. And then back, uh, also about the AgriLife building, we did talk about that, uh, I think in the last meeting. Uh, when we talked about putting the parking lot in over there, that we should probably look at going ahead and buying that before we build that parking lot, so I'll talk to Mr. Anderson about that. Any other discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Judge, I definitely will, uh, support you, uh, looking into this. I can't say that when it comes time to vote to buy property that I would support that. Uh, and I understand the situation because you and I have talked about it. Uh, I don't say the county needing twenty acres. Uh, and I understand that they probably wouldn't want to sell anything less, uh, but, uh, if at all possible, around ten acres, I would say.
Okay.
Of course, the sheriff and different commissioners might disagree with me on that portion of it, but, uh, and then again, too, I don't think that, uh, this particular landowner will try to get to the county as far as making money and us paying too much for that property, so, uh, and I trust your judgment on it. What, uh, this is a two-part situation. You're going to, uh, negotiate with Mr. and our Perry Anderson Properties in reference to the other and this as well, correct?
If that's the pleasure of the court, which is the current motion is to do both.
All right. Thank you.
There won't be a purchase made until that comes back to court. I'm not going to sign any papers. All right, any other discussion? Thank you, Commissioner. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twenty, discuss, uh, consider and possibly approve utilizing the remaining balance of unappated ARPA funds in the amount of ninety-seven thousand, sixty-five dollars and seventy-nine cents on one or more additional eligible projects. Mr. Tupper, you and I and, uh, Ms. Sims had a discussion yesterday about this, and you had a couple of ideas. Um, you want to talk about those, or would, uh, does the court have any items they want to bring up before I ask Mr. Tupper to speak? Come on in.
Yes, sir. So part of, uh, the ARPA rule is that we can, uh, basically reimburse ourselves for shortfalls and, and disasters. Uh, so the winter storm of, of twenty-one, uh, we filed a, a P A claim, and they denied us. We filed it through two appeals, and they denied us the total of.
FEMA denied us.
FEMA. FEMA denied us reimbursement for the total of forty-four thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars and eighty-six cents. Uh, my idea is to reimburse us for those costs that, that we utilized to, uh, respond and recover from the winter storms.
What?
FEMA did do a payout of twelve thousand on that, but it was overtime that they deemed not eligible.
Okay. What, what category did they have that under? What you just said, you were going to request reimbursement for it. What?
So this is a, it, this is allowable by ARPA expenses.
Do you remember last meeting, Melinda Smith was here, our grand administrator, and she said that was something new that she had just learned, uh, a day or two before that meeting?
So I guess you and I can talk later about this, and I don't have a problem with it at all. I just want to have an understanding. Uh, originally, whenever this came out, there were other counties that used this for salaries.
Yes.
This is not what we're doing.
No, sir. This would be a reimbursement for expenses that, that we've done, occurred, occurred because of the disaster, so un, uh, unbudgeted funds because of a disaster that, that we're going to reimburse it.
Yeah, it's not over above. It's already been paid. It's, that was paid in twenty-one. And you checked with Melinda. This isn't eligible expense.
It is eligible.
Yes. So your request is forty-four thousand?
Uh, for, for that one, it would be forty-four thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars and eighty-six cents. Uh, again, that's what FEMA denied us. Uh, and then we also have the April eighth of twenty twenty-four storm. Uh, we, we had a local response there. Uh, I will have to check the paperwork and make sure that, that we have the correct paperwork to do that one. Uh, and the, and the amount, but that's another thing that we could do, and if I remember correctly, it was somewhere around twenty thousand, uh, for that. We were hit right afterwards with the April twentieth stuff, and that started what, what the FEMA project is, but we could also do the April eighth. We just got to make sure the documentation is correct.
Going back on the, uh, forty-four, that was in twenty-one?
Yes.
Was it a, uh, a national, or, I mean, was it declared a disaster by the government?
Federally declared, yes.
On the April storms, um, would that include overtime damages?
So it, it could include, or, yes, it could include any, any P A projects, so any disaster-related expenses.
So we had a deer here to our pickup at two A M. Coming back in from that, would that be covered? Since we were responding to the disaster. Actually, we have an insurance claim.
I was saying, is it insured?
No.
It's insured, then yes.
The deductible should be reimbursed.
Yes.
Possibly. We can look into that. Just to make sure everybody's aware, the, the spring storm event two thousand twenty-four, the, uh, period for that was April twenty-sixth to June fifth, so this, uh, you remember when Kirkendall flooded real bad?
Yeah.
That's when we had, we had some damage from that, and there was not a federal disaster declaration for that. Which means we were not reimbursed.
We had three.
So we have an end-of-the-year deadline, right?
Yeah.
So
We do.
we approved this today, then it has to go to, back and get approved federally?
Yes, sir.
So whatever we decide today is?
The rules on ARPA is, is if y'all decide to do it, we, we move those funds and can show in the ledger where we have paid that, and that, that's it.
What's the amount again, uh, Tupper, on the spring?
Uh, on the spring, I, I don't have a, a correct amount. I believe it's around twenty thousand, if I remember correctly.
So you have forty-four thousand, what?
Forty-four thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars and eighty-six cents.
So all in all, you're looking at sixty-four out of those two, sixty-four, seven?
Yes.
Do you have anything else?
Uh, then the, another project that we've been looking at and, and trying to get bids on is, is controlled access for all the remainder of the, the courthouse from the first floor to the third, and possibly if, if, uh, that other building's bought, that, that as well. Uh, the rough estimate, uh, on that, I have a, a firm estimate, and it was right under fifty thousand, like forty-nine thousand. Uh, rough estimate uh, on that, I have a, a firm estimate that it was right under fifty thousand, like forty-nine thousand and some change. Uh, but we did add some doors such as the, the.
Agrolife?
Agrolife building. Uh, so rough estimate on that's gonna be right at sixty-five. That's adjustable. Uh, if, if we got a PO, we could basically adjust it down or up to, or, or down to uh, the mountain that's left over after all these other funds are done, in my opinion. And, and we could do that by decreasing doors and just hit those doors later.
Motion to approve, that's presented.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, sent by Commissioner Cooper, and that would be to reimburse the county the forty-four seven oh seven eighty-six for the Yuri Storm. And you'll bring us a firm amount in the next meeting for the reimbursement to the county for the uh, April eighth through the tenth or eleventh?
Yes, sir.
Event that we had. And any leftover will go toward the.
Control access.
Control access, you'll get a firm bid and bring that back and we'll finalize all of this in the next meeting. Is that the motion?
Yes, sir.
Second?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Twenty-one, sending a public hearing to, to consider request by Mr. Adam Crutman and by Access Surveyors LLC for a setback variance for tracks one through four. Hoby Wilson and Ariola Edition, Francisco Ariola Survey, abstract number two, located in precinct one in Lumberton. Uh, this is just sending of the public hearing, is that correct? Adam, I mean, uh, Alex. Do y'all wanna do that during the regular meeting on the twenty-third? Or just make it the first item of that uh, regular meeting or y'all, y'all want to have a special meeting before the regular meeting?
What, what uh, would be our limitations uh, to have the same, to have item number twenty-one and twenty-two's public hearing on the same day?
We should be able to do them both on the same day. And we could either do it, uh, is this something that need done quickly?
Uh, yes, sir.
Well, I might've told one commissioner we'd keep that meeting light because since it's the day before holiday, but I might have to change that now.
We can meet early, too.
We could do a nine forty-five special meeting and have both of these during that nine forty-five meeting, you think it'll take any more than fifteen minutes?
No, sir.
And then these items will be on the regular meeting agenda to take action?
Yes, sir.
Based on comments during the public hearing?
Yes, sir.
So nine forty-five on December the twenty-third would be the public hearing on number twenty-one. And then uh, that's a motion by Commissioner Cooper, is that right?
Yes.
Second by Commissioner Young, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And then twenty-two is sending a public hearing to consider a request by JD Knight Construction LLC for a setback variance for utility easement from ten feet to five feet on lot twenty of Madison Park Phase Two called three point one five three acres and over Properties LLC, series Keith West Instrument Number two oh one eight dash eight two seven nine zero located in precinct three in Lumberton. Y'all both feel like both of these can be done within fifteen minutes?
Yes.
All right, so the same time, same date? Nine forty-five AM, December twenty-third. So move, all in favor? I'm sorry, second, need a second.
Second.
Have a second, by Commissioner Young, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
Twenty-three, discussion of any other non-agenda item without taking action, including reports from elected officials and county heads or announcements which may be of interest to the public. We have our Christmas luncheon tomorrow at eleven o'clock, don't forget, I think Regina may have a few things to say about that. Does anybody else have any other announcements or reports or discussion items? Sheriff?
Um, I just wanna say, I wanted to say that we had a really great tree lighting this year. Uh, Sheriff and I was talking and we estimated over a thousand people showed up for it. And the new setup was great, uh, the power worked out great, I mean, we, we actually had bought some, um, or we've paid for a new uh, section of power that they're using off of a um, a, a, a plant tower. And, I mean, a light tower plant and uh.
And that was Mr. Silcox?
Silcox, yeah, Junior Silcox, provided that for us, yeah. And uh, anyway, we've paid for that, so we'll have that to use for years to come. And we've got room to grow, uh, I, I, this thing's just gonna get bigger and bigger. So uh, next year, there's some things that we've talked about, kinda do a little bit different. Uh, we're gonna be putting some parking signs up across the street of the old uh, hospital and do some kinda different things logistically for, so people know where to park because they said, I went over and had a drone fly over and see where everybody was parked because it was crazy. Because there was a lot, a lot of people here, but uh, anyway, I appreciate everybody that came and, and Judge and Sheriff. And we uh, we had ran into a little issue when our, uh, community service people all bailed on us, we were supposed to do all the trash that night. So the sheriff's office stepped up and, and they took care of everything that, you know, it, it looked, it was great. So I just wanna thank the sheriff and all these people for everything they did to help us that night.
Well, I hope them community service workers didn't get their hours if they bailed on us. Thank you very much, Sheriff. And everybody that had any part in that, there's a bunch of people, I know you, Shelley, and eight, four, five others.
Yeah, a bunch of us.
It looks great around here, so thank y'all for that.
It was, it was great, we had great sponsors this year, we had extra money that we normally don't have, so we were able to spend a little extra money to have some things still carry us through the future too, so. But uh, anyway, it was a wonderful event, I just expected to get bigger and bigger. But uh, also now for the employee party goes, unless you, did you have anything to say about? Uh, the employee party is tomorrow and I still need some of you elected officials to come up, some of y'all have already volunteered. But the rest of y'all, I'd like y'all to make sure you, you get with me. Uh, eleven o'clock is the busy time because everybody comes from eleven to twelve, so. And uh, there's another round at, at twelve o'clock and everybody gets off for that second shift, but uh, we'd love to have everybody there. Uh, we have our last reindeer game today at two o'clock and it's the battle of the clerks. So, and it's been fierce, so I'll tell you what, they're twelve teams, double elimination, it's been great, everybody's really enjoyed it, so.
County Clerk's Office has not lost at all.
They have not, they're on the top of the bracket because it's a double elimination, they have not lost a game. So they go against the county clerks and it's a best, it's a, if they lose one, then they gotta play again, so. But uh, we've got a really fun game for today that nobody knows about, it'll be interesting, so.
That's the county clerk and the district clerk's office?
Yeah.
All right.
So it should be a lot of fun, so, and you're, and we're gonna give those awards out tomorrow.
Door prizes tomorrow, we'd always use more.
Yeah.
We can always use more door prizes, we, you know, I've still got some money to spend to go out and get a few more things, but um, we've got a, we're gonna have hopefully a record number of door prizes this year. The meal's gonna be chili and um, and crawfish etouffee with some other, with some side things with it, you know, but we're trying to keep the meal a little simpler this year so we can spend more money on prizes.
Y'all not mixing the chili and the crawfish etouffee?
We are.
Oh, really?
Upon request. Upon request. Uh, but no, uh, anyway, anybody else that, you know, that has a, a door prize or something, we'd gladly take it, you can drop it off at Debbie's office. She's uh, she's accepting those for us and uh, anyway, so that's, that's about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She brought up parking and that reminded me that I needed to bring it to y'all's attention. In the last meeting when we approved the parking lot projects, I told you that we would not have to do any detention or we didn't think we would have to do any detention. We'll be able to do the drainage improvements through channelization and uh, since then, Jeff and I have talked three or four times about it and he sees no way around doing an detention bond. So I've been talking to Tex Dodd about that to see if there's any way to get around it. As of right now, we've been told no, but uh, that may be something we bring up to discuss in a workshop after the first of the year. Meant to bring that up earlier and forgot. Sheriff, did you have anything?
That's true.
Does anybody else, Debbie?
So.
Anyone?
Got a lot of compliments about the tree lighting. Got more this year than I've heard ever, so I'm gonna pass that on. And then I'll leave today to go to Tyler for a subscription business.
I know, you get out of, you get out of serving.
So I will be here tomorrow, so I'll miss it, but just, just so you know, so you'll come looking for me.
I will.
All right, any other discussion, Alex?
Good to see Mr. Devil Cruz today.
Yes, sir, thank you, Pete.
Thank you for your help, we appreciate it very much.
Move to the chair.
Second. That motion by Commissioner Cooper, sent by Commissioner Kirkendall to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Merry Christmas, everybody.